There you go.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you, Amy. Welcome. I will go ahead and call to order this special session of the Auburn City Council for July 17th, and our special session on our Auburn Economic Recovery Workshop. First order of business, if you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'll just note that I'm stuck where I'm sitting, so I will have to sit in but please don't take any disrespect for that. But if you join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the public who stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. My apologies for in today's week's. We have some bad connection, but we'll do our best here. Amy, if I can ask you to take the role, please.
Councilmember Downton Calvio, I am present. Amara.
Present.
Mackie.
Here.
Boakley.
Here.
And Mayor Berlin.
I am here. Okay, great. Well, thank you, everybody. First item here is public comment. This is the time provided that if any person may want to speak to the council on an item that is on the agenda, may do so. Anybody on the call have an item that is on the agenda that they'd like to comment on now? Okay, Steve, Amy, is there any public comment that we received, email or telephone?
You know, I actually didn't receive any public comment, but I have a quick one, if I may.
Go ahead, Amy.
I just want to do a quick shout out to Marjorie Cook. I don't know how many of you follow Open and Auburn on Facebook, but it's incredible. And she's putting so much time into sharing businesses on that site that when I am trying to figure out where I want to go to lunch or dinner, I just go to that site and see who's open. Or if I want to go buy a top, I look to see what store is open. So I just think it's awesome what she's doing and wanted to recognize her really quick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marjorie. Yes, great job. Lots of work.
Great. Thank you for that. Echo. Echo everybody else's comments. So, okay, we'll jump right into it. Our health emergency response update. I did just get off with our health officer. The number of cases obviously continues to rise, just over 1,200 today. There are 52 people in the hospital. Important to note that county has begun to actually count the number of people in the hospital, whether they're residents or non-residents. So we can now differentiate that. Thirty of those 52 people in the hospital are county residents. There are nine people right now in ICU. Three of those are county residents. That's been a big request by a number of people in the public. However, when it comes to the state's tracking of hospitalization rates and hospital bed and ICU bed availability, it doesn't really matter where they're residents of, but it does get held essentially against us in some of those numbers. However, the number of Placer County residents that are testing positive, we continue to pass that threshold. So that is, you know, even if you took the hospitalizations and ICU beds outside of the picture here, we would still likely be on the monitor list on our own. And just a quick thing about the hospital beds, we dived in a little bit today about how many beds are available. And just for some, just for information, out of the hospitals that are in Placer County, there are 409 hospital beds. Right now, there are 30 of those that are available, meaning that patients make up the remainder 390 or so beds. Now, most of those are other medical conditions unrelated to COVID, but again, it's looking at the overall availability of COVID patients. Right now, there's only 30 beds available in the hospital. In ICU, there are 140 ICU beds. As of the reporting, only 16 of those beds are available. Again, most of those ICU beds are being taken up by non-COVID patients, but the state does look at it holistically at the ability to care for, care for patients. And I should also put that the 140 ICU beds does not include the surge capacity that the hospital was built several months ago, but have not yet really instituted. So there's still some ability, should be needed, that the hospitals can actually increase beyond that. If you haven't checked out the dashboard, they did make some changes to it. They've updated additional information specifically related to breaking down the hospitalization. As I mentioned at the top, you can now see how many of those are county residents. You can also see how many of those hospital hospitalizations are hospitalized due to COVID. Not that they went into the hospital for other reasons and then tested COVID, tested for COVID, but that were actually hospitalized for COVID. So you can start to kind of, you know, dive into the data just a little bit more. So check that out if you haven't. A quick update on some of the close, business closures and restrictions. First off, you may have all seen today, the governor announced that counties that are on the monitoring list as we are will not be allowed to resume in-person instruction until they have been taken off the monitoring list for 14 days. So what that means that is, one, our goal is obviously to try to get the virus numbers down so that the county can get off the list and kids can go back to school. I know there's a number of parents even on this call, let alone our business owners who are eager to have their kids in school. So there is a chance that we could be removed from that list. In talking with the president of the Auburn Union School District, today, they, the Auburn Union School District will likely announce their plans for virtual learning for the beginning of the, the beginning of the school year later today. So again, we could be taken off the list. Schools could potentially choose to return to in-person instruction. But I think a number of the districts are already beginning for distance learning. Clarification that the, yeah, go ahead, Alice.
I was just going to mention that, yes, I, and I listened to the governor speak about that today. Of course, there always is the possibility that we get off within two weeks because most schools are set to start in a month. But I think that schools are going to be prudent about this and start with the virtual learning and then, and then see where they're at. But they do have to be, the county does have to be off the list for 14 days before they can move back into that in-class or in-person instruction. And then he also established procedures to go back to remote learning. If a school has more than 5% of positive cases, then it has to go into remote learning. So there are some specifics on when they would have to close as well. So we'll continue to watch how that moves.
Yeah, thank you for that.
For those of you that know. Does that go for the, I'm sorry, I just had a question for Alice.
No, go ahead, Sandy.
Oh, yeah. Does that, does that go for the Catholic school? Because I heard they are opening their doors completely.
You know, the governor said that the guidance that this is supposed to be for all schools, but then he backtracked because there was a question about public versus private, and he said, "public instruction." So I think that there is guidance and recommendation to the public, to the private school sector, but because they don't utilize public dollars, I don't, I'm not 100% sure that, that this would affect them. It seems like it would because the order affects businesses, right? And, and things of that nature, regardless if it's a private business or a public. So it seems like it would be across the board, but there was a little bit of confusion from the governor himself on that specific question, Sandy.
And just looking at the governor's order right now, I don't see anything that differentiates public schools versus private and/or religious schools, but it's probably potentially in the details, like everything is, and, you know, you start to blend recommendations and requirements. So Alice, thank you very much for, for those additions. One other clarification that I wanted to add that our public health officer stressed today was, you know, there's a lot of discussion. We're going to discuss it here in, in a little bit about moving indoor operations outdoors. And there had been some discussion about hair and barber shops being able to just move outside and cut outside. However, the Board of Cosmetology provided some clarification to their license holders, and that included the fact that as a part of their license, hair and barber shops are required to be indoors in a facility. So that really means that even though they are on the list that just restricts indoor operations, their license does not allow them outside. And so essentially, the cleanest way to think of it is they are closed. So we had some discussion about the pros and cons of that, but again, at the end of the day, it's the state's licensing program that is restricting their ability to move outside.
Daniel, on that, I heard some scuttlebutt that the, that the Department of Consumer Affairs, where the board is located, is actually looking at some possible guidelines to maybe allows for outdoor services that they, you know, given that we're in the state of emergency, they may be able to relax some of that. But I haven't gotten any confirmation on that. I'm just hearing that there's some scuttlebutt, that there's some discussion that maybe that, that will come down the pipeline. It'd be great if it did.
That's great. I would just add too, that the public health officer just really urged us, and I know we're going to talk about this here in a moment, but that even though some of these indoor operations are moved outside, i.e. dining, that all of the other typical precautions still are in effect. Meaning, we really shouldn't just move tables outside. They really still need to be distanced from each other. And so you can still have practical distancing from one another. And so just because you're outside doesn't necessarily mean you are 100% risk-free. It just is reducing the risk, which is why it's not restricted under the state's order, but that there's just a warning about thinking that you're completely safe outside. On testing, the demand for testing continues to push the county and our testing facilities beyond their capacity. The county is working to add more capacity. However, the state has turned around and said they will not fund any additional testing within the county. So the county is looking right now at the ability to fund through their own dollars additional testing capacity at the two locations. Again, one in Kings Beach and then one in Rockland. They're also going to be updating their messaging because testing has become kind of overwhelmed here as of late. You know, a couple of months ago, we talked about them encouraging anybody to go get tested and to help us kind of provide a baseline. But with testing at capacity, they're really wanting to change the messaging and make sure that people know that the testing right now is really reserved for those that are symptomatic and/or at risk. And so that's an important change that they'll be beginning to push out publicly. So right now, if you go, anybody can go onto the website and reserve a testing spot through Optum, though it asks questions, it kind of determines whether you have symptoms or not. The, the online vendor, they don't really prioritize those who get appointments. So that has created a problem for those that are symptomatic. Yeah, go ahead, Alice.
I was just going to mention, just to throw this in the mix, when the governor was talking about going back to school, he did state that there would be mandates for rotating staff to be tested. So every other month, school staff, teachers, administrators, and so forth would be required to be tested. So if that goes into play, that's a, another huge population that's going to be going through the testing realm. So I just want to put that out there. That was something he just made that comment today. So it would be on a rotating basis. Every other month, teachers would, you know, depending on whatever criteria they establish by name or what have you, would have to go in and get tested within the entire county. So it's a lot.
Well, and one of the, one of the challenges we discussed today is with the backlog of testing. You know, I may, you know, you may not show signs for three to five days. It may take you three days to get a, an appointment, and then you may not get your results for seven days. So right then and there, 14 days past the time we were infected by COVID. And so the testing almost becomes completely worthless because you are already well, almost two weeks into spreading the virus. And so that's a, a real, a real issue just related to testing. But the last thing that I just wanted to mention is, if you haven't seen the county's deep dive that they do each Friday into the data, last Friday, they provided some statistics, breaking the positive cases down by a number of demographics, including ethnicity. And specifically, our Latino and Hispanic population is the highest ethnicity as far as positive cases within Placer County, which is disproportionate to the number of Hispanic and Latino families we have within the county. And so I asked, what, what are we doing to support, to support those individuals and those groups? And so the county is working with the Latino Council to do additional outreach and to try to provide additional education, whether it be in Spanish or through other methods to reach that targeted group. When I asked, well, you know, what are the, the causes? Because I've personally heard a lot about the fact that, you know, disproportionate because that's the group that we are more or less requiring to work and that these are often essential jobs and essential workers. And the, the result is really threefold. You know, the, the reason Latino Hispanic population is, is at the top is they typically, just based on their communities, like to have large family gatherings. And, you know, that allows the spread. Many of them live in large households where they don't necessarily have the size and capacity within their home to self-isolate. And so it's easily able to spread amongst family members. And then lastly, it is the case that many of this community, they are working in sectors where they don't have the ability, like others, to work from home, whether they're working in fast food, retail, et cetera. And so they are at a, at a higher risk like, like others, but again, it's kind of disproportionate. So I just raised this because, you know, it is one of the, the higher within Placer County, much higher than, than the other ethnicities, including white Caucasian, which makes up most of Placer County, but is really second when it comes to, comes to the ethnicity of cases. So I'll just end with, we concluded that discussion with just doing all of our part to reduce COVID, and that is wearing face coverings, providing six-foot social distancing, washing hands. And lastly, when possible, staying home or staying in a location where you can stay away from other people. So that is the update from the county on the health update. I'm happy to answer any questions, and if anybody else has anything else they'd like to add, please feel free. Go ahead, Matt.
Daniel, thank you for the update. If, if it takes so long to get test results back, and how in the world is contact tracing doing any good for us at this point? I mean, it, I've got a gentleman whose wife came down with symptoms right before the Fourth of July holiday. She got tested the next day. The test results didn't come in until this last Monday, and she was positive. I mean, this testing timeframe is a joke, and, and it's going to be impossible for us to get beyond this pandemic if we can't figure out the testing thing. Does the county have any plans to, I mean, you mentioned they're trying to expedite the tests that we take here, but what do they say with regards to how long these tests are taking and the contact racing?
Well, the county health officer, Dr. Sisson, summarized testing last week as unacceptable, that the, the timing right now and the capacity, like you just said, just from a logical standpoint, there is no benefit of just knowing that you're positive if you're already on the, you know, time period that it typically takes to no longer be contagious. I think it's back to adding the capacity to try to get more testing done is, is one piece of it. And the county continues to advocate to the state to put pressure on the vendor, which is OptumServe, which is handling across the state and their backlog at their facility that they ship the, the results to. Now, I think it should be noted that we talked about last week that a number of entities like the city of Auburn have entered into their own agreements with private labs so that we can have priority testing. That too was another discussion is maybe the county, if they're going to add more capacity that they have, it'd be more of a priority lane, meaning that those results may go somewhere else so that they can have a faster turnaround because that priority lane is designated for those that are at risk or already symptomatic so that it can be meaningful, not just a, a result. So I don't really, that, that's kind of, Matt, the, the basis of what they've said, but I think they share the same sentiment that you're expressing, which is, again, it's unacceptable at the current stages.
Hey, Daniel, can I jump in?
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I want to follow up on Matt's point because I completely agree. I mean, I think especially in a world where we're living 14-day periods at a time, you know, if we don't have the ability to test and get them back, I mean, I've been tested twice back when they were encouraging that. And the first time was three days, second time was 11 days, getting them back. And I guess Placer County doesn't have its own labs. That's something that I've heard, so they have to ship them out, which is causing a problem. But if that, if we can't get that capacity changed, I don't see how we're ever going to be able to, to truly think in way, you know, in a, in a positive way that we're ever going to get off the watch list. Because to Matt's point, if we can't quickly tell and isolate these, these outbreaks, you know, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be futile. It's just going to be spikes, 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 spike. And the idea that the state's not going to fund that, fund additional testing is disappointing, obviously, to say the least. But it feels like this should be a priority, you know, if we want to get back to it. Now, the other question and I had, and I just really want to ask you if it came up at all, is I know that one of the things that, that we've been dinged for is the ICU capacity. And I know we're at 140, and because I looked up in our ad test station, the notion of, of baseline versus surge in those beds. And right now, we have, what is it? How many in ICU? Is it 11?
There are currently nine individuals within the ICU that are COVID.
Right. So what we really have right now is a huge surge in non-COVID ICU beds. I mean, so because at, at 140, if you need a 20%, basically, you've got to have whatever it is, 110 beds or 115 beds are being used, of which only nine are, are COVID-related. My question is, can we, can we do some additional surge additions to bring that number up of availability? And then can that work for us in terms of the 14-day watch list? Did that come up at all? In other words, I know there's a much bigger capacity for, for a potential surge, but right now, we're being judged off baseline. I wonder if the state would allow, say we added 20 beds. 20 beds, I believe, would put us off the ICU list. I think 10 would. Because the last I saw, we were at like 18% availability. Does that make sense? Did that come up at all?
It, it, it makes sense. It did not come up. I can definitely flag that back to the county and ask about the surge capacity because there was a lot of discussion on that a couple of months ago when we were first kind of really preparing ourselves for, I guess, the wave that we're in now. But you're right, we're not taking advantage of it, and so it's kind of being held against us. And the fact that, you know, we have relatively lower numbers and we're right on the base of a, you know, metropolitan area. Obviously, regionally, they're moving or placing individuals into the hospitals in the Roseville area from Sacramento County to give them hospital, you know, support. And so that then starts to snowball and work against us, which is where there has been a lot of discussion and anger amongst many of the other cities that, hey, we're being held, you know, held to something that we have no control over that's outside of our county. And really, the county, from my opinion, you know, relays that the state looks at it regionally, and so they kind of skirt the concern and just say, that's just how it works.
Well, and the reason that this is super important, in my opinion, is I've been tracking the numbers, the 14-day, 100 versus, right now, we're at like, not counting today, we're at like 112, the threshold is 100. But the truth is, the last 11 days in a row, if we came in no higher than the highest, which was like 37, in these next three days, we would be beneath 100. So depending on, assuming we're not going to have a huge spike, because you, because when you go back 14, this includes the two worst days in Placer County, you know, a 49 and a 42, and, you know, and we're right around 400,000. So the, I guess my point is if today and the next two days, we're like 36 and lower, we're going to be under 100. You know, so to me, if that number worked and if we got the ICU thing figured out, we should be able to come off the list. And that's why I'm so concerned about the willingness. I mean, look, if our number surged, that's all there is, right? There's not a lot we can do if them raw numbers are above 100, so be it. But if it's about beds and we have the ability to add beds, if those work for us, then that should be something we ought to be actively looking at.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good point, Rob. I think that's on all of us to continue to advocate that the way the state looks at the statistics, you know, really is a balanced way of, of, of doing that. So thank you for that. Anybody else have any comments or thoughts, questions related to the, the health update?
I actually had a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
One of our chamber members asked if churches are closed because of the new closures, can they use their rooms for some kind of education gatherings or some sort? Can they use their rooms for other stuff other than the church? And she didn't know if it was a question that where she could get answered.
I'm happy to help get in contact. I don't know that's the, the baseline answer of, of whether or not that kind of non-religious component use would be allowed. I will just note real quick on the churches, because we did talk a little bit about one of the issues that they've had with a, a church, not within Placer County, but it's somewhat of the, the issue of why indoor services are now on the restriction list, was that, you know, church was following the, the requirements to reduce capacity. But what they found was that after church, every member would get together and hug each other. And so while they sat within distance during the service, there was no public contact with each other. And so that was kind of the, the bigger of the issues related to why indoor really had to be restricted. So Jackie, I don't really have a specific answer for you, but I'm happy to get you in contact with the county and that with the group here, what we hear the answer looks like.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on. Our next item here is city actions and services. So I'll turn it to Bob. Bob, I know you've been doing a lot with outdoor dining, which we can hold for the next item. But what else is going on in the city that, that you've been working on? And you're on mute.
Thank you very much. Well, we should have all restaurant permits issued in the next three, four business days. And so now, with the mayor's help, we're starting to look on to new uses of public spaces out there. Right now, we're, we're starting to line up yoga and Pilates classes, small classes, to be able to reserve space out in the school park preserve. My guess is other kinds of recreational opportunities at that same level can, can also mesh in with that, that activity in the, in that particular park. We're seeing a lot of that kind of activity going on with ARD. We're coordinating with them right now, seeing what their protocols are, their policies are, and we're going to try to mirror those fairly closely so there isn't a push-pull between, between the agencies. One of the interesting, unexpected aspects of, of starting to have more outdoor dining again, is that things are just getting dirtier quicker. And it's not that any given business isn't doing their, their part. They're all doing a great job, but we just have a lot of people outside. Trash cans are filling faster with, with food to go. We're finding that we have to do a lot more power washing out there, and we will just continue up, moving our resources to the business areas, make sure they stay clean and, and very positive place for people to be. So it's just, we're seeing interesting little shifts in, in our work requirements just because there's a shift in the way that we're all doing business now. And I think we'll be able to handle, handle those all just fine. But we'll keep you informed as to the new policies coming forward for, for low-impact recreational opportunities in our parks and see what other opportunities we have with public lands.
Daniel, I have a question for Bob. Just on, I actually had a business owner who has a Pilates studio in Auburn, and they were asking specifically about outdoor. And I know that they can conduct classes outdoor. But if they're interested in using the, the school park preserve, who do they get in contact to, to make that happen? They said they contacted ARD, and ARD says you need a permit, and we're not issuing any permits. So that was kind of discern, just, you know.
Okay, they, they will be starting as well. But we will have a policy ready to go probably late Tuesday. You don't have all the information out there. The classes are going to be regulated to 10 folks. We can't, we can't exceed those numbers. So they'll all be small, small classes. But we certainly can have the opportunity to open those facilities.
Thank you.
Bob, any updates you have on City Hall and City Services and how you're providing those?
So City Hall, we had to go back to a more closed environment again. We have had a couple of infected folks on our staff. We've been very fortunate that we haven't had those spread within the organization. But to be just on the cautious side, what we have done is gone back to closing City Hall, having City Hall services open to the public Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, but by appointment only. And we've made the transition already seems to be working just fine. It is a way that we had been working previously. So I don't think it's a huge surprise. All of, all city employees continue to be employed and be working. But what we're doing is we're rotating them between working in City Hall and at home, and working at home. So that just keeps an additional level of separation. So if we do find another employee becoming affected, the, the potential of affecting the number of City Hall employees gets reduced. And so that's how we will continue moving forward for the next several weeks. And we'll, we'll continue to make changes as the environment changes itself.
You said Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, Bob?
Yes, we decided to go Wednesday as well.
Okay, Wednesday, Thursday. Okay, by appointment. Thank you.
Any other questions for Bob related to some of the city services? I know we kind of intermixed some other items. So outdoor dining expansion, you had mentioned working with the business associations and permitting some of those. Can you just elaborate, you know, on the efforts with individual businesses that maybe want to use the parking spaces, for example, to set out diners or tables, and what's some of the insurance struggles that you have found as well?
Sure. The way we originally envisioned this was for the business associations themselves to work with all of their businesses, come up with the criteria of who wants to do what where, just hand it to us, and then we would put together all the applications into one large approval process. Part of the reasoning for that is, we wanted to make sure that all the businesses working within the association understood the impacts of pushing dining outdoors. Because the more dining we push outdoors, the fewer parking spots we have. And so there's a balance that needs to go on there, and a discussion that needs to go on. And I think it did. But it kind of stalled out. So the city has taken over. We have gone to now every single restaurant location. We are in the process of doing everybody's application, laying out, doing everyone's physical layout, what they can and can't do, what are their requirements, like the separation, what's the appropriate separation for tables, how much space needs to be provided for sidewalks, etc. And we have just been continuing to work one by one on with them. Additionally, we were looking at the business associations for providing overall insurance for the entire project. They're starting to have problems with that, especially for dining on the streets. So we will be working individually with each restaurant to get them insured correctly, and covered, it covers the city, covers the business association and the business itself. That's all in process. We are now becoming very individualized with working with the businesses. Say, this morning, we worked with Idlevice on High Street. They've got a real problem there. They've got a long, narrow strip on a very busy street, and we just weren't comfortable allowing them to move out into the parking areas. That, that could be a dangerous location. So we really worked with them, and we all sat down and problem solved, and came up with what I think we all felt was a very good solution. Keeps them legal, keeps them in business, and has enough table and seating, I think, to keep their, their doors open throughout this process. So that's the kind of work we're now doing. We're just working with each business. Once we come to a good conclusion for all of us, we will be wrapping it up. Tree Potsy, we hope to get their permit to them tonight. They're looking to open out on the side on the alley. That will provide them with a good deal of dining opportunities, and will keep tables off the streets again. And so anytime that we can find solutions to do that, I think will be a win-win for everybody. Nicer environment, safer environment, and we can get more tables out into the public spaces as we can. So I think with that, we should have everybody issued Tuesday or Wednesday, by Tuesday or Wednesday. The only thing that can hold them up right now is if we just can't come to an agreement, which we have not had that come up yet, or if there is an ongoing insurance issue with any given business. But outside of that, I think we're, we're just running right through these one at a time, and we'll have everybody up and running in no time.
Great, thank you. Cheryl, I know you had a question.
Yes. Thanks, Bob, for doing all this with our businesses. It's really important to keep them going. And I think this outside dining is great. I was talking to our PCWA representative, Josh Alpine, and he was offering hand washing stations from PCWA for our business district, and, you know, just to kind of make it safer for the people that are going in and out of these restaurants, or even our retail businesses. So he said that he had talked to Andy about it, and they can provide these. So.
That's great. Fantastic.
I just found, I just found that out about 10 minutes before this meeting, or I would have emailed that to you. So.
Thank you.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Cheryl. That's great. Go ahead, Marjorie.
So if you guys do that, and if you can give me the locations, I can push that on open in Auburn to let people know that they feel safer. And maybe somebody will come out that wasn't, help support the businesses. I think that's great to have those available.
The more safety precautions, the better. I think people feel comfortable.
That's exactly what I was going to say was, you know, kind of goes back to that theme, just because we're outdoors is not enough to reduce the risk. So having hand washing stations and ensuring these tables are spaced is really the goal here. So Cheryl, thank you for that. And we look forward to that information. Any other, well, I have a question for the Chamber of Commerce representatives. Have you guys been hearing any of the, the issues related to insurance struggles from any of your members, related to whether it's even restaurants or other businesses of moving to an outdoor venue?
No, I haven't, I haven't heard that concern yet. So that was new to me. But of course, if any of our business members have that issue, we'd be happy to try and help them through that. But that's not something we have heard of at this time.
Okay, great. Yeah. Bob and I were talking about it just today as kind of a new issue. And so just want to make sure we're staying on top of it. And again, Bob, working with the associations to kind of see if, if there's some umbrella, but, you know, opportunities, but may not have that either. So is.
We'll make it happen one way or the other.
What happened? Uh-oh, we lost Daniel.
Uh-oh. Oh, it's right.
He'll probably be clicking back in in a second.
While he is, while he's off, maybe we could just jump to the next one. And that's the PPE distribution. We did, as you all suggested at the last meeting, we, we did receive the information from the chamber to send out through the business license program. I don't know if it was that, or a combination, or just the chamber really pushing out there. But we did have quite a number of additional folks coming through. We actually had a backup of cars, which has been a first time. So it, we definitely saw an increase in, in the pickup rates for, for this past week, which is a good day.
That's a good thing. I don't think it was actually the new push, because I haven't emailed any of the new people we got from that email campaign. So this last week, we really only had about 10 new orders prior to the push from, or the email from City Hall. And then I'm looking now, it looks like we have approximately 57 new orders after that email went out, which will be distributed next Wednesday. So I've talked with the chamber board, and we have approximately four different volunteers who will be coordinating with you, Bob. I'll be coordinating with you on behalf of all of our volunteers to get those orders put together like we have in the past, and then have that pickup day. And like we discussed, we do the Wednesday still, but we will need to extend the time. And so I would suggest that we go back to the 10 to one for this larger group.
Okay, this Wednesday, 10 to one?
Yep.
You got it.
Perfect.
And that's great. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, I am too. I was a little concerned that our orders were only, you know, usually about 10 a week, except for that first push. But we just needed to get to a few more folks. And so that worked out perfectly with that email from the city. So thank you.
That's great. Glad to hear it.
Do we want to move on to the chamber report?
Sure.
Anything additional there?
Not, not too much additional. I may be, well, let's see, we've got the PPE going on. We don't have any seminars coming up at this time. We did just have our board meeting this last week. We are moving forward with doing ambassador visits and ribbon cuttings and site visits in a way, in a manner that's still safe. And so if a chamber member has an outdoor space where ambassadors can be six feet apart and wearing masks, then we will have a larger group of ambassadors going to those particular events. If it is a smaller type of venue where ambassadors would need to come indoors, we're limiting it, and we're doing it in shifts and smaller groups. And I'm sure Jackie can talk just a little bit more about that.
Yeah, with the smaller groups and the smaller businesses, we'll be limiting, depending on what size the business is. But we'll also be doing videos and Facebook lives, so that we can give them the exposure that they deserve for their ribbon cutting, and posting those on the chambers' social media outlets.
Great. We're also working on a pay it forward program, which we will hopefully have on our website and officially released. I would say now, since it's Friday, at the beginning of next week, our goal was the end of this week, but it just, we weren't able to get it together. But the basis of the program is that anybody in our community can pay it forward and pay the dues of a chamber member that they have identified needs that type of assistance. We recognize that there are businesses in our community that want to continue to stay involved and be, continue to be a chamber member, but might not necessarily have the funds available to them right now. We also have gotten requests from other businesses and community members where they want to help out our small businesses. So this is a way for people to be able to pay it forward, assist another business in our community, allow them to continue to be active, and, and help out through the, by and through their chamber membership, and kind of, like I said, pay it forward. So we're excited about that program. And I think that'll be pretty beneficial for some of our chamber members that are, are having a tough go right now. And then, I think last, but certainly not least, as all of you know, Keith has been out, and I have been filling his shoes in the best capacity that I could. But as my business is starting to pick up, I don't have the ability to fill that role as much as I had in the past. So at the board meeting, we came to a collective decision that Jackie, one of our board members, would be stepping up in a temporary ED position, and putting a little bit more effort into the chamber than I was able to do so. So she will be coming in, and, and you'll see her face a little bit more than mine, and she'll be filling those shoes for a little bit, until hopefully Keith is well enough to come back into his role. So she'll be our temporary ED. I'm very excited. And I think she's going to do a fantastic job.
I don't know. I'm not quite sure. She's not really that well known. So we all have somebody that's a little bit more well known out there.
Or someone that is better communicating, you know, a little bit better communicator.
Well, as, as Jackie and I spoke yesterday, you know, there's nobody really that bleeds Auburn and supports businesses with the ribbon cuttings more than Jackie. So Allison, I think that your efforts in the last couple of months, you know, cannot go without commenting on just what a wonderful job you have done stepping up the chamber efforts. And, you know, we're, we're all in this very unique time. You know, there's a lot of issues to face, and we've all, I mean, just every single person on this call have had to step up to support our businesses. And Allison, I just want to publicly thank you, especially in, in your efforts with the PPE and many of the other workshops. And I definitely know that Jackie will, will be able to, to keep up those efforts that you have done, and kind of balance some of that workload, because you really are, are balancing your, your personal life, your work life, and the chamber on your back. And so happy to see Jackie take some of that work. So Jackie, congratulations on that.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm worried Jackie's a little shy for this job, isn't she?
I don't know if I can talk to people. It'll be tough.
Yeah, I don't know. Congratulations. And I want to echo what Daniel said. Allison, you've done a fantastic job. Super hard to do that kind of thing in a volunteer spot. So thank you, and looking forward to working with you too, Jackie. Awesome.
No, we as a chamber couldn't have survived the last few months without Allison. Lucky for us that her business slowed down, so she was able to help us a little bit more, and have to deal with me a little bit more bothering her about stuff. But Allison not only has made the chamber survive through the pandemic, but she has grown the chamber through the pandemic, which is unbelievable. So thank you, Allison.
Thank you, Allison.
Yes, absolutely.
And since Jackie is no stranger to texting me every single day when the city is not doing something correctly, or there's an opportunity for us to expand our, our relationship, I know that, well, Jackie and I will have the continued communication that we have every single day of things. So Jackie, continue to look forward to that. So thank you, Allison. Anything else, or Jack, anything else from the chamber?
I don't think so.
Okay, great. And again, my apologies for missing the last couple of reports. Obviously, my reception is not very good. Moving on to our business association reports, Marjorie, why don't I start with you with, for the airport park, Business Park Association? And you're on mute, Marjorie. Let me hear, I can, oh, you're still on mute. There we go.
Good. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
So I mean, you know, we're not meeting right now. Seems like the, I mean, the tenant I have here has got only five employees working here. The rest are at home. I think for a lot of businesses, not considered essential, they still have employees working from home. And I, hopefully, I'm not mixing this meeting up with EDC, but I was asked to check into any, I think that EDC, empty buildings, if you have a wrong meeting. So again, nothing new to, to report on that I know of, so.
Great. Thank you, Marjorie. Appreciate that. Monique Call for the 49er Business Association.
Hi, everyone. I have nothing new to report either. Everything's just going along as best as we can with everything.
Great. Well, thank you very much for that. Ron Haswell, Visit Placer, the Visitors' Bureau. What's going on in your world?
Yeah, so obviously, with the changing environment, we change what we're doing. One of the things that we are, we have decided we are not going to do for a little while on our social is post much that is Tahoe related. People are kind of heading up there anyway, and it's a very, very kind of tenuous relationship between residents and visitors. And since the Resort Association already does that, we're kind of going to focus down here. And we're, we're looking to pivot to a support business shop local campaign throughout South Placers. I was on our own board call yesterday, and there was a fair amount of, of direction given that we'd like.
of direction given that we'd like to see us, uh, really dig in and, and, and try to, you know, make sure the residents have good information about our, uh, you know, what's open throughout this and, and businesses that are doing inspiring things. So that's a campaign that we're really, um, looking to ramp up here in the next days and weeks. So I think that'll be good. Um, again, if we've learned anything, all of us, I think it's, if you can't be flexible right now, you're going to be in real trouble. Oh, anyway, that's what, uh, that's kind of what we got going.
Great. Thank you, Rob. Uh, one thing I'll mention to you, uh, I reported to the council, but I, uh, this week, uh, met with Fox Forty. They are doing a, a series, uh, over the next month on, uh, different tourism destinations and how, uh, those places, uh, struggle and balance COVID-19 restrictions, uh, with, uh, with tourism. And so, uh, they are highlighting Auburn and, and we talked about some of the outdoor activities you can do in our region. Um, but I stressed very much so the need to follow health precautions. Whether that be starting one, stay at home and come later. Two, if you're going to come here despite that, um, you know, respect our businesses and our, our employees um, by wearing face coverings, social distancing and, and whatnot. Um, but still highlighting that there's a lot of outdoor activities in our, in our backyard, um, that we love and like to share, but need to share safely. So that was supposed to air, uh, today. I'm not sure if it did. Um, but it was actually, uh, a piece for their state, all of their stations that they own in California. So Auburn will get a little bit of a spotlight and hopefully it will be as balanced as I attempted to make it. So.
Oh, that's fantastic. And, you know, we're doing a video with that same messaging and, um, yeah, I mean, again, I continue to advocate for outdoor activity. Um, I'm not a, I'm not a doctor, obviously, but I know, I know anecdotally that people are a hard way safer outdoors. Uh, it's very good for people's minds. So, um, I, I, I always urge our residents to be patient when they see trails with more people, you know, and spots they used to go to have more people, because those, those folks really need it too. So um, that's why the very bulk of our messaging is, you know, respect. It's, it's something that Visit California has really pushed and we have dug in on. You know, come, do your stuff, do it respectfully, respect our business, have patience with the new rules, all that stuff. So that I'll look forward to seeing that.
Yeah, I'll share that with the group. Um, the other thing too, just, uh, based on your, um, your comments about Tahoe. Uh, the county and specifically the, uh, Resort Association, uh, they did push out some, uh, campaign information, uh, and in visiting, uh, their region, uh, there, there's signage all over, uh, really trying to emphasize the need for safety. So uh, the county's website and their, their newsletter to county residents last night had a lot of that information and, and messaging, uh, built into that. So happy to share that with the group. Um, with that, I think that kind of concludes us here, but, uh, just want to provide a quick roundtable to see if anybody on here has anything else that maybe we didn't cover that they'd like to, um, discuss. Okay, um, so the next thing is just deciding our next meeting. Um, my, my gut tells me that just with everything going on and we're kind of back into a busy time period that we should meet weekly and get back together Friday. Um, I just want to make sure that's the, um, the, 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 the will of the group.
I think that's, I think that's good. Yeah.
Okay, I see enough nodding of heads that we will get back together on Friday, June twenty-fourth. Um, but as of always, uh, we'll continue to communicate, uh, to this group and to our association, any changes, uh, that occur. And then I just want to, one time, one more stress, uh, specifically for the Chamber of the Business Associations, as I have committed to Bob, that, um, the city will do everything in its power to quickly issue permits and to support, uh, outdoor activities. And I've told Bob that I'll come in this weekend if need be and help him issue those permits, uh, and put some stuff up. So I think that goes for all of us, um, willing to support, but, um, Allison, uh, and Jackie and, and Marjorie and, and Monique and, and, and our downtown and old town business associations not with us. We just need you to help us get that message out to the businesses and rely on you to, to communicate that, um, to your members. So um, with that, everyone, thank you very much. Have a safe, uh, weekend and, uh, we will see you guys all here next week.
Thanks.
Thanks, Daniel. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye.